Well, it's a slightly more peaceful conditions for you, at least for the time being.
I can't promise to raise a say of excitement. On Thursday afternoon, I was about to finish my submissions on the second issue, which was whether the TECLE exemption applies to contracts of insurance. And your lordships may recall, I was responding to Mr Sumption's contention that the court has never said that the services have to be capable of being obtained from the authority's own department. And the first submission I've made in response to that was it missed the point in issue. The point in issue being whether there was an agreement between two persons, not where you got it from. But the second submission I want to make is that Mr Sumption's contention ignores why the control test was formulated in the terms that it was. That is to say, by reference to the control which the authority may exercise over one of its own departments.
Similar to.
Similar to, to one of its own departments. Of course, the authority is free to do things itself, there's no problem about that. What the court was addressing was the...
Yes, sorry, aren't you go. Sorry, this is just of no importance.
Sorry, what the court was addressing was the possibility of a public authority having one of its own departments constituted as a separate legal entity and then exercising control over it. So in those cases, it would be using its own resources, it's exercising control similar to that it exercises over its own department. And that was the underlying idea behind the test. Your lordships also asked the question of Mr Sumption, whether mutual insurance was possible if a mutual had to compete, if it to be awarded contracts of insurance, your lordship called that. There is no evidence to say that it's impossible at all, and in fact, there's no reason why it isn't possible. The evidence is that municipal mutual insurance did compete for contracts in the local authority field. And there are other mutuals which now do so, for example, the National Farmers Union Mutual and the Housing Association Property Mutual. Obviously, a mutual will not get business from its members if its offer is not the best available. But if it isn't, why should it get the business? Well, can I now move to the next issue, which is whether individual control is necessary or whether collective control is sufficient?
Yes, they're rather closely related, these two, aren't they?
Well, they're related. Your lordship is right about that. And the reason in one sense they're related is precisely because of the underlying purpose of the control test. Well, I was going to develop five main points, if I may, under this heading, and can I just identify them at the outset, and so your lordship knows where I'm going?
This is issue three.
My lord, yes. This is individual collective control. The first is that the settled case law of the Court of Justice is expressed to require the contracting authority itself to exercise the required control. That's the first point. Secondly, the Court of Justice has never held that collective control is sufficient to exempt a contract from the directive.
It does go to the length of saying there's a presumption, doesn't it?
With respect, no. To anticipate what your lordship is saying, there are statements which say that if an authority owns the shareholding, that may indicate, or if you want to say a presumption, that that authority may exercise control. But the court has never, and I'll show your lordship that, but the court has never held that collective control is sufficient to exempt a contract from the directive. Thirdly, the collective control test is incompatible with the purpose, the terms, and the scheme of the directive, creating irrational distinctions and opening the way to abuse. Fourthly, there's no reason to assume that if collective control is sufficient to avoid any requirement for competition, under general treaty principles, it must be sufficient to exempt a contract from the requirements of the directive. And finally, when the court has considered whether collective control is sufficient, it has not considered how it is reconcilable with the provisions of the directive, and it plainly is not. Your lordships will see that the only case, well, the main case, I need to look at Coda Tel Brabant, the court never considered how the collective control test was to be reconciled with the provisions of the directive to which it did not refer.
The court has considered collective control is sufficient, it has not considered...
How it is reconcilable with the provisions of the directive. And what I'm going to show your lordship in due course, if I may, when I come to it, is that in Coda Tel Brabant, the court, nor the attorney, the advocate general, they never considered the provisions of the directive and how collective control might be reconciled with them. They were simply considering the general treaty principles.
So you're not, of course, you don't have to, but you're not challenging that it may work in the broad ambit of the treaty? Are you accepting that?
Well, it may or it may not, in my respectful submission, it ought not to, but I don't need to engage with that question here, because the relevant question is not what general treaty principles may or may not require, it is whether the directive applies. And your lordship will see the questions about, those give rise to different questions, and I'll explain to your lordship in due course, if I may. Can I then take the first point quite shortly? The Court of Justice has stated the control test in numerous cases under the directive, and in each case, it has been stated in terms of the control exercised by the contracting authority itself. There is no case in which it has stated the test in terms of collective control by authorities collectively. Well, we've given a large number of examples in our printed case, and I'm not going to take your lordship through them. Can I simply remind your lordship of the case I took you to on Thursday, the Commission in Italy, which was in volume five, tab thirty-one, at paragraph thirty-six, where the court stated what the settled law of the court was? Volume five, tab thirty-one. Your lordship anticipated. This would be good enough to go to paragraph thirty-six in the judgment. Your lordship will see, paragraph thirty-six, according to the court's settled case law, a call for tenders under the directives relating to public procurement is not compulsory, even if the contracting party is an entity legally distinct from the contracting authority where two conditions are met. First, the public authority which is a contracting authority must exercise over the distinct entity in question a control which is similar to that which it exercises over its own departments. So your lordship will see, the first TECLE condition has always been expressed in terms of the control which the contracting authority itself exercises over the entity which is contracting.
This is not a consortium case, or is it?
No, it isn't. I mean, I was just using it...
And TECLE, TECLE was not a consortium case?
TECLE was a consortium case, yes. I'm going to come to that in a moment.
I mean, TECLE is, you know, paragraph fifty is where it's first stated, in the same terms.
Exactly so.
I mean, why are you not taking it to TECLE?
I am in the moment, my lord.
I see.
Well, this is a grand chamber decision, I should say.
I see.
And all I wanted to show your lordship was that's the settled case law about how it's expressed. I'm sorry, it's a very short point. The second point is that the Court of Justice has never held that collective control is sufficient to exempt...
Can you say that again, please?
This is my second general point, which is that the Court of Justice has never held that collective control is sufficient to exempt a contract from the directive. We've dealt with the case law in our printed case, paragraphs eighty-one to ninety-six. I don't ask your lordships to take that up now, there are a large number of cases. There are four cases which potentially raise the issue directly under the directive.
I'm slightly behind you, you're speaking rather fast.
I'm sorry, my lord.
Your paragraph numbers in your case...
Were eighty-one to ninety-six. But what I wanted to focus on, if I may, are four cases which potentially raise the issue directly under the directive. Can I tell your lordship which those were? Firstly, TECLE itself, which is volume seven, at tab forty-six. Secondly, Carpatermo.
Sorry, second what?
Second case is, TECLE's the first one. Second one is Carpatermo, which is volume four, at tab twenty-six. The third is Asempfo, which is volume three, tab twenty-three. And the fourth is a different Commission in Italy case, which is at volume five, tab thirty-two. And what I want to do, if I may, is to focus on those cases where the issue potentially arose. The first is TECLE itself, which is volume seven, at tab forty-six. And the relevant pages in the judgments are page eight-one-five-four to eight-one-five-five. And I would respectfully suggest that this case is significant for two features in particular. Firstly, it's significant because it identified what the control test is designed to ascertain, namely whether there's a contract between two persons, that's at paragraphs forty-nine, which explains what's going to happen in paragraph fifty. And the second, and that establishes that the whole point of the control test is to identify whether there is an agreement in substance between two persons. The second point is the actual answer in paragraph fifty-one and the ruling itself. So your lordship will see that the answer to the question must be that the directive is a...
So what does the control test do in that respect?
Well, it's intended to identify whether there is in substance, as well as in form, a contract between two separate persons.
What does the answer it produces?
In this case?
In any case, where you find there is control.
Where there is control, there's no contract, because if...
Well, if there's no contract, why does the arrangement not fall immediately outside the directive?
That is right, it does fall outside the directive, because the directive only applies...
No, but why do you need the second part?
Well, the second part, as I showed your lordship on Thursday...
Yeah, but if, if there is no contract, then it would automatically fall outside the directive.
I respectfully agree, but what your lordship has to recall is why I took your lordship through the other conditions and what purpose they served. And the reason they're there is to prevent an abuse of a...
Thanks to your explanation, I understand that. The point, though, is that if there were no contract, you couldn't insert the second condition, because it would be already outside the, because it would not, there would be no contract.
Well, I think your lordship is making assumption, which one just needs to come back to. TECLE applies where there is in form a contract, because you've got two legal entities. And that's why your lordship will see that in principle, in paragraph fifty, it said it's sufficient if the contract was concluded between a local authority and a person who's legally distinct from it. So what the court is saying is, although primae facic will fall within the terms of the directive, because there is in form a contract, we're prepared to say that there isn't an agreement between two persons in substance, if the control test is satisfied, but provided also that conditions which prevent abuse of that occurring are also satisfied. So they're cumulative conditions in order to take...
I understand that, but all I'm saying is, your analysis, which says, I mean, the result is the same, I mean, I understand the result. All I'm saying is, I wonder whether your analysis, which says that there isn't in that situation, in substance, no contract, goes too far, because if that were so, the thing would fall out on that basis. But it doesn't do so. And the court adds, it says, it's got to be controlled, and moreover, to avoid, to avoid abuse, you have to have the function test as well.
Yes. Lord, the reason, the reason I emphasise that the function control test is about two separate persons, because that's what it is, the function of the, sorry, I'm about to say function, the function test, which is obviously not elegant at all, but the function of the second limb, as I showed your lordships from Association Professionale, is to ensure that the entity in question isn't competing. Now, that's, sorry, I understand where your lordships come from, but I think that the point which your lordship needs to recognise is, what the court is doing is to say, are the conditions in which we're prepared to accept what is ostensibly a contract falls outside the directive? And if they were simply to say that the control test is satisfied, therefore you're out, put it crudely, one of the, they were concerned about the possibility of abuse at that page.
Absolutely, that's what the advocate general said.
So the, so that, the point that I'm making is, although your lordship said, would say to me, well, it's a matter of logic, and I think this is the point the logic, you're putting to me, it's a matter of logic, if you, if you pass the first test, why are you looking at anything else, which is...
What I'm saying, if you pass the first test, you couldn't look at anything else.
Well, that's...
If you, if you're construed as saying that there isn't a contract, all I'm saying is that there is a contract, but it is one where the, it's with a party over which you have control. And in that situation, there is a contract, but you get out, and you get out if the second, the function test is also applying.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
Well, I'm sorry, my lord.
But Mr Ham, I mean, you're really saying, it's a contract, fine, but it's not a contract within the meaning of an operation of the directive.
Yes.
And is that tied to the point that one has to look at the contracting authority itself?
Yes.
And it can't shelter behind all the other participants, because you're looking at its individual position?
Exactly so.
And testing that against what it would do with its own subsidiary or its own departments and its own authority?
Exactly. And if your lordship, the point I wanted to make about the second scheme point is the actual ruling and the judgment in this case, is if one looks at paragraph fifty-one, it's replicated in the ruling itself, which is the heavy type part at the end. It requires the contracting authority to exercise, to conclude in writing with an entity which is formally distinct from it and independent of it in decision-making. So it's looking specifically at the control which the contracting authority itself exercises.
Mr Ham, I mean, how much you make of the linguistic point, which on the face of it could be thought very strong, but when you look at paragraph fifty of TECLE, the line four, in the first bit of it, it says, where the local authority exercises over a control. And then in contradistinction at the end of the sentence is, control local authority or authorities in the plural.
Well, I do make that distinction, and it's important because of the context of this particular case, because, as your lordship will recall, I think it's the municipality of Viana, I hope I get their name correctly, they had a very small shareholding in the consortium, I think your lordship will find it set out earlier on in the judgment, and it was that which gave the advocate general concern.
So which case we're looking at?
This is TECLE itself.
TECLE itself.
Because, your lord, forgive me, I'll find the shareholding, it was very small.
I think it's set out at...
It's naught point nine percent of it, they had the shareholding. So Viana itself had a very small shareholding, the naught point nine percent, and that was what gave rise to the advocate general's concern. And in my respectful submission, one actually wanted, of course, the court doesn't apply the test it puts forward to the facts of the case, but it's quite plain in my submissions, it thought it was going to fail, because it never referred the second condition back, it was only referring the first condition back. So there was a distinct reason for the difference between the first and second limb of the condition, precisely because they serve different purposes. Yeah, my lord, I perhaps also want to show your lordship the heavy type part, which is the actual ruling, which is the directive coordinating the procedures for the order of public service contracts is applicable, in a case where the contracting authority, such as the local authority, plans to conclude in writing with an entity which is formally distinct from it and independent of it in regard to its decision-making, a contract for cuneer interest, supplier product. So if you conclude a contract with an entity which is independent of you in decision-making, the directive applies. That's, that's the ruling. So it's specifically in point in a case where a consortium is actually involved.
It's a word, "it",
Yes.
that you draw attention to.
Yes, well, the next case is the Carpatermo case, which is volume four, at tab twenty-six. Your lordships will recall, this was a contract between the Commune di Busto Arcisio and a company called Agesp, A-G-E-S-P, for the supply of fuel and to deal with the municipality's heating allowances. Now, Agesp, which was the entity with whom the contract was made, was a wholly owned subsidiary of Agesp Holdings, A-J-E-S-P Holdings. Now, the commune owned ninety-nine point nine-eight percent of the shares in the holding company. The other six shareholders were other municipalities, one gets that from paragraph ten of the judgment, if your lordships wish to see that. And the holding company owned Agesp a hundred percent, so effectively, the commune owned ninety-nine point nine-eight percent of the holding company's shares.
And there was no private share, no private share...
No private shareholding, it was just the other, the other shareholders and municipalities. As I say, your lordship will find that at paragraph, yeah, it's paragraph ten, page four-one-seven-four. Sets up the facts for that purpose, paragraph ten. If your lordship goes in the judgment itself, page four-one-eight-oh, your lordship will see that, again, the point is being made in paragraph thirty-two and thirty-three, replicating TECLE about the need for an agreement between two persons. And again, in paragraph thirty-three, the position can only be otherwise only in a case where the local authority exercises over the person controlled, a control which is similar to that which it exercises over its own department. So again, it's singular. The facts are then set out in paragraph thirty-four about the shareholding in Agesp Holding. And then at thirty-five, you will see that at present Agesp Holding holds a hundred percent of the share capital in Agesp, which was the contracting entity. It then goes on to say, in paragraph thirty-six, in order to determine whether the contracting authority exercises a control similar to that which it exercises over its own departments, it's necessary to take account of all the legislative provisions and relevant circumstances. It must follow from that examination that the successful tenderer is subject to a control enabling the contracting authority to influence that company's decision, it must be a case of power of decisive influence over both the strategic objectives and the significant decisions of the company. So your lordship will see, that's all consistent. Can I ask your lordship to notice that I don't have to come back to it, that when dealing with the, when looking at how you apply the control test, it's not simply a question of the legislative provisions, one has to look at all the relevant circumstances, because one's going to have to see in practice how autonomous the body is, but I'll come back to that, if I may. Now, paragraph thirty-seven is significant, because although my lord from Mr Sumption didn't emphasise it, Lord Justice Stanley Burden thought that this was a paragraph which indicated that collective control was sufficient. In my respectful submission, it says nothing of the kind. It says, the fact that the contracting authority holds alone altogether with other public authorities all the share capital in a successful tenderer tends to indicate, without being decisive, that that contracting authority exercises over that company a control which is similar to that which it exercises over its own departments, as contemplated by paragraph fifty of TECLE. So again, your lordship will see that what it was intended to show was that the particular contracting authority who's entering the contract has that. Can I say that if one reads that literally, divorced from the facts of this case, it doesn't make any sense? If, for example, you held naught point two percent of the shareholding, the fact that other public sector entities may have held the rest wouldn't indicate at all anything about your control, it makes perfectly good sense on the facts of this particular case. And it may be that the reason why you have a reference to the other share capital is because of the Stat Hala point about a private involvement, which the court has had. But, my lord, it's also plain, if one goes on to look at how the court reasoned the decision, which I want to take your lordship through, from paragraph thirty-eight to forty, that it looked simply at what the Commune di Busto Arcisio did, not what the other people did collectively. So in paragraph thirty-eight, it goes on, it's apparent from the case file that the statutes of Agesp Holding and Agesp confer on the board of directors of each of those companies the broadest possible powers for the ordinary, extraordinary management of the company. Those statutes do not reserve for the Commune di Busto Arisio any control or specific voting powers restricting the freedom of action conferred on those boards of directors. The control exercised by the Commune di Busto Arisio of those two companies can be described as consisting essentially of the latitude conferred by company law on the majority of the shareholders, which places considerable limits on its power to influence the decisions of those companies. Moreover, any influence which the commune might have on Agesp's decisions is through a holding company. The intervention of such an intermediary may, depending on the circumstances of the case, weaken any control possibly exercised by the contracting authority over a joint stock company merely because it holds shares in that company. It follows that in such circumstances, subject to their being verified by the court adjudicating on the substance of the main proceedings, the contracting authority does not exercise over the successful tenderer for the public procurement contracted issue here, a control similar to that which it exercises over its own departments. Now, there are a number of points of significance here. Firstly, throughout what is being focused on is the control which the Commune di Busto Arcisio exercised, who were, of course, the contracting authority. Secondly, when one comes to look at the sufficiency of control, although, as my lord Lord Hope pointed out from paragraph thirty-seven, one may get a form of presumption by share ownership, it's plainly a weak presumption. For here, the commune owned ninety-nine point nine-eight percent of the shareholding in the holding company, but that did not suffice, in the view of the court, to give it the necessary control. And furthermore, there was, in paragraph thirty-nine, a significance being attached to an intermediary, which was the, because it was exercised through the holding company. In my submission, the reason for that is that the court is focusing on how autonomous in practice the relevant entity is, it's not simply concerned with what the formal constitutional position may be. Yes. Your lordships... So if your lordship then goes on to paragraph forty-seven, which it's dealing with the answer, says accordingly, the answer to the first question must be that the directive precludes the direct award of a public supply and service contract, the main value of which lies in its supply, to a joint stock company whose board of directors has ample managerial powers, which it may exercise independently, and whose share capitals at present hold entirely by another... by another joint stock company, whose majority shareholder is in turn the contracting authority. So your lordship will see that the crucial part was that the board of directors had ample managerial powers, which it was in practice capable of exercising independently, notwithstanding the fact of the shareholding. More, the other point I should just draw attention to while we're here goes back to the submission I was making on Thursday, and I asked your lordship to note in the head, paragraph forty-five, about the only exceptions which are to the directive are those which are exhaustively and expressly mentioned.
Yes.
And the other point, which I can just ask your lordship to note at this stage, is paragraph fifty-five. This was because there was, it was a reference to article thirteen of the Utilities Directive. There was an exemption there in the Utilities Directive, but there wasn't an equivalent exemption in the Public Sector Directive. And so the court said that, as exceptions must be interpreted restrictively, the court has not found it appropriate to extend the application of article thirteen of the Utilities Directive, the application of the Public Sector Directive. Can I just ask your lordship to note, article thirteen is the precursor of article twenty-six, which I'm going to take your lordships to in due course under the Utilities Directive. But the point that I wanted to make at this stage, if I may, is that what one will see, because this affects how the general treaty principles point, is that the way in which the Utilities, the Utilities in the Public Sector Directive give effect to the various principles is different, and you can have greater or lesser latitude about them. And there's therefore equally no reason why one may not have different requirements between general treaty principles and the directives themselves. But I'll come back to that if I may. More, the third case, which is again particularly significant, is ASEMFO, which is volume three at tab twenty-three. Now, may I say, Mr. Assumption was wrong to suggest that this was not a case in which the directive was considered. It was a case in which the directive was considered. I'll show your lordship that. Your lordship, may recall, this is a case about an entity called Traxa. And the significance about Traxa was it was a company which was, the shareholding was ninety-nine per cent of Traxa's shares were held by the Spanish state, and the remaining one per cent of Traxa's shares were held by four autonomous communities, as they were called. Each of them had one share. And the contracts in issue were made by the autonomous communities with Traxa. And what is significant about the case is that the court did not consider what control the state and the autonomous communities collectively could exercise over Traxa. It looked specifically at the control which the autonomous communities themselves could exercise over Traxa. And the crucial paragraphs are paragraphs fifty-nine to sixty-one in the judgment. Perhaps I can just pick it up at paragraph fifty-eight. This is dealing with the first condition in Teckel. It's page three oh six-two. And your lordship will see, beginning in fifty-seven as regards the first condition, I'm taking this quite quickly, and then fifty-eight, in the case in the main proceedings, it's clear from the case file but subject to confirmation by the referring court, the ninety-nine per cent of Traxa's share capital is held by the Spanish state itself and through a holding company in a guarantee fund, and that four autonomous communities, each with one share, hold one per cent of the capital. So that's the background. In that regard, the argument cannot be accepted that the condition is met only if the contract's performed at the demand of the Spanish state, excluding those which are the subject of a demand from the autonomous communities, regardless which Traxa must be regarded as a third party. And it's the reasons why that is the case which are of significance. It appears to follow from the relevant Spanish legislation that Traxa is required to carry out the orders given to it by the public authorities, including the autonomous communities. It also seems to follow from that, from that national legislation, that as with the Spanish state, in the context of its activities with those communities, as an instrument and technical service, Traxa is not free to fix the tariff for its actions and its relationships with them are not contractual. It seems therefore that Traxa cannot be regarded as a third party in relation to the autonomous community which holds part of its capital. Now, the crucial part of the reasoning is that Traxa had to do what it was told by any autonomous community. It had to do the work, and it wasn't free to fix its tariff for it. And one, one traced that back through the relevant paragraphs of the judgment, but that's the crucial part of the reasoning. What the court could have said, and it would have been the simplest thing possible to have said, was that this is an entity which is a hundred per cent owned by public authorities, and collectively they have control. But what the court decided to look at was the control which each autonomous community itself exercised.
I mean, when it says not contractual, I mean, does it mean not even, not even, not even in sort of theoretical, formal terms? So the end of sixty?
Yes. Effectively, they're saying that it won't come to a contract. This is all being dealt with under the first condition in Teckel.
All right.
And it's dealing with the, as your lordship will see from fifty-five, about the call under the directives.
Well, that repeats Teckel fifty, yeah.
Yes.
And fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, yes. It follows the contracting and so forth. And your lordship will see that, if you, this is dealing with the directive, and they must have thought that there'd be a possible document which looks like a contract. If you go to paragraph sixty-five, where they come to their overall conclusion, because they're considering the directives, it follows from the entirety the foregoing considerations, because they also consider the second condition, that the reply to the second question must be that a body of rules such that governing Traxa which enables us as a public undertaking acting as an instrument and technical service of several public authorities to execute operations, that being subject to the regime laid down by those directives, is not contrary to the directives, since first the public authorities concerned exercise over that undertaking a control similar to that which they exercise over their own departments; and second, the undertaking carries out a central part of its activities with those same authorities. So effectively, what one had in with Traxa was a number of authorities which could themselves exercise control, whether it be the Spanish state or the four autonomous communities.
I mean, looking at sixty-five, three lines up, you're saying, since first, each of the public authorities concerned, rather than the public authorities collectively concerned.
Yes. Well, as a matter of fact, that's what they looked at, and that was the reasoning about the autonomous communities.
Can you look back at fifty-seven, just to pick up what we were seeing in Carpetermo? Because this is picking up the presumption.
Yes.
But it's, I suppose the words are tend to indicate generally, which suggests it's a starting point, but then they go on from there.
Yes. If one looks at the wording in fifty-seven, again, it comes back to the same point in Carpetermo.
Yes.
It says, as regards the first condition relating to the public authorities, that the public authorities' control, it follows from the court's case law that the fact that the contracting authority holds alone altogether with other public authorities all of the share capital in a successful tenderer tends to indicate generally that that contracting authority exercises over that company a control which is similar to that which it exercises over its own department. Again, it's looking at what the contracting authority itself is doing. And so when one comes to paragraphs fifty-nine to sixty-one, it's looking at what the autonomous community is doing, because that's the relevant body.
Yes.
So the authority, the contracting authority was the?
I'm sorry.
The contracting authority was?
It was the autonomous community.
Each of them were.
Communities.
Well, I think it was a single community. Your lordship, just bear with me. three. Effectively, there was a first question under article eighty-six about whether you could effectively exempt public undertaking from the directives, whether there were no special circumstances. Then it was asked, the second question was whether that regime was compatible with the directives. The question about Commission in Spain, the court then looked at page three oh five-nine, the second question, by a second question, the referring court asked the court whether a body of rules such that governing Traxa which enables it to execute operations without being subject to the regime laid down by those directives contrary to those directives. And then deals with the relevant directives. And your lordship will then see that that's the introduction to the passage one's looking at. So what, when the court was considering the question, it would have had to consider not merely the question about a contract between the state and Traxa, but also a contract between the autonomous communities and Traxa, and that's why it was looking at the autonomous communities specifically.
But individually.
No.
What?
I'm sorry.
The autonomous communities individually, hopefully. Maybe it doesn't.
I'm not sure I picked that up. More, yes, because if, they were, they were required to deal with whatever an individual autonomous community required them to do. Your lordship would just bear with me.
It was a reference at page three oh four-six to autonomous communities, what they could do under the royal decree.
Yes. Your lordship was.
May entrust, where, three oh four-six, that, um, it's in the quotation in thirteen, the middle paragraph, the various departments.
Your lordship will see, I think my lord, Lord Roger, is making paragraph thirteen on page three oh four-six, and the, it says, in paragraph one, Traxa and subsidiaries are an instrument and technical service to general administration of state, and if those of each of the autonomous communities concerned, the various departments or ministries of the autonomous communities, the aforementioned public ministries, whether the body is subject to them and the entities of any nature which connect to them for the purpose of carrying out their plans, may entrust Traxa or its subsidiaries with works and activities necessarily exercised over powers and duties, and with complementary or ancillary works and activities in accordance with the regime established by this royal decree. And then if your lordship goes on to fourteen, what they got under article four of the royal decree was, I'm sorry, effective their costs, and, fifteen, so effectively they got their costs, and then fifteen, mandatory action which is entrusted to Traxa shall form the subjects of appropriate drafts, memorandums, or other technical documents, before finally as in demand, the competent organ shall approve those documents and follow the mandatory procedures and technical legal processes and supervise them in appropriate formalities in respect of the expense. The demand for each mandatory action should be formally communicated by the authorities to Traxa or its subsidiaries by means of an instruction containing in addition to the appropriate information, the name of the authority, the period within which the instruction is to be carried out, its value, the budgetary heading corresponding to it, and if appropriate, the annual amounts on which the financing is based and the respective amount relating to it, as well as the directive designated for the action to be executed. So your lordship will see effectively each of the authorities could give Traxa a direction what to do, and that was embodied in the documents which it had. More, can I move on to the fourth case? I'm sorry. The fourth case is a Commission in Italy decision which your lordships haven't yet seen. It's volume five at tab thirty-two. There isn't an official English version of this judgment. Your lordships have in tab thirty-two the French version, and there is a translation. It's not an official translation, but it's one that parties, I think, are collectively just about happy with, in English, which follows on from it. This, this was a case, as your lordship will see, about the commune of Mantua, and your lordship has paragraph eight, so it was an infraction proceeding case. There was an agreement in December nineteen ninety-seven, the municipality of Mantua signed ASI, the management, maintenance, and development of the municipal computer services up to December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, without the award being subject to attendant procedure. So that was what was in issue. ASI was in fact, as your, was in fact owned by Mantua with some subsidiary shares being held by other municipalities.
Where do we find that, set out?
Well, your lordship goes to seventeen. The Italian Republic maintains that at the time of concluding the agreement, in accordance with domestic regulations in force, ASI's capital was fully held by the municipality of Mantua and by other bordering municipalities. And it went on to complain to exercise the relevant control. And you, what's significant is that what the court looked at was the control which Mantua exercised. Its only concern with the other authorities was whether or not they had a private sector shareholding in them. Can I just show your lordship how that follows? The court's judgment begins at paragraph twenty, and your lordship will see there's a reference back to Teckel. And then at twenty-three, it has to look at ASI, whether the two conditions are satisfied. And it makes the point again in twenty-four that you have to look not merely at the regulatory provisions, but also the relevant circumstances, and so forth. And your lordship will see from twenty-five, the Italian Republic's case, that Mantua was the majority shareholder, was able to appoint members of the governing bodies and to condition the activities of that company, the French is orienté for condition, but that's how it's been translated. It's also indicated pursuant to the agreement, the municipal council of the fore-said municipality established the operating expenses of the company, in other words, it controlled its budget, by means of decisions, and the municipality of Mantua reserved the right to carry out a series of checks, firstly with the appointment of a municipal officer entrusted with collaborating, promoting, and controlling the operations of ASI, and secondly with control over the accounts of the company. So effectively, it wasn't simply the majority shareholder, it could, it could appoint an officer and did, to control the operations and to control the budget of the company. It says consequently, the fore-said municipality was entitled to exert a decisive influence both over the strategic objectives and over the major decision by appointing members of the governing body of that company and a municipal officer entrusted with directing and controlling the operations of the latter. This right is sufficient to demonstrate the existence of power structural and functional controlled, held by the municipality of Mantua over that country, similar to that exercise, company, similar to that exercised over its own services, such as satisfy the first condition. However, the commission maintains that the fore-said condition could not be satisfied since firstly, at the time of the conclusion of the agreement, two bodies incorporated under private law participate in the capital of ASI, T E A S P A, and A P A M S P A. And secondly, even if one wished to assume that the ASI were a company with a fully state-owned capital, the participation of private shareholders was expressly provided for as from the formation thereof. With regard to the first argument raised by the commission, it's sufficient to note the commission did not contest the information supplied by the Italian Republic in the rejoinder based on which the two companies in question were inter municipal companies. So the only question, so the approach of the court was look at the control which the contracting authority exercises. If there are other people involved, are they private sector entities or not? That was what they were saying. Your lordship will see that, again, from paragraph twenty-nine to thirty, the point is being made that you judge whether the conditions are being satisfied prima facie at the date of the award unless there are special circumstances which indicate otherwise. I'll just take that quite shortly, because that's the basic principle. And your lordships may wish to note, with regard to the second condition, in paragraph thirty-one, it should be recalled, the company carries out most of its activities, the entity holding it pursuant to the fore-said. If the activities of that company are mainly intended for the entry in question, and any other activities are purely marginal, and it refers back to Carpetermo, which is, I'm sorry, I should have pointed that out when we were there, the second condition is looking at whether the other activities are marginal. So, well, that again is a case where the work, there was a possibility of collective control, but in each of the four cases which the question arose, Teckel, Carpetermo, ASEMFO, and the Commission. in Italy, when looking at the application of the directive, the court has in each case looked at the control which the contracting authority itself exercises over the relevant entity in question. It is never suggested that collective control would be sufficient to negate the existence of a contract for the purpose of the directive. As I say, those are the four, four most crucial cases so far as the directive is concerned because they gave rise to the possibility of an argument about collective control. My third general point is that the collective control test is incompatible with the purpose, terms and scheme of the directive and it creates irrational distinctions and opens the way to abuse. Now, the first point to be made under this heading is that the court has made it plain that the term contract is to be interpreted so as to ensure that the directive is given full effect in opening up public procurement to competition. Treating any participation in the control of the relevant entity as sufficient is incompatible with that objective. Now, the general approach to the construction of the term contract is set out very clearly in the court's judgment in what's, I think, commonly known as the La Scala case or the ordinarii architecti delle provincia di Milano. And I apologize to anyone who speaks Italian for my pronunciation. It was a case my learned friend took your lordship to, it's in volume six, tab thirty-nine. Can I, can I just explain how, what the case was about and therefore how the point One needs to understand a bit about the planning system in Italy for this purpose. In Italy, when developers got planning permission, they were required to make a monetary contribution for infrastructure works. But they could instead undertake to carry out the infrastructure works for the municipality and by way of a total or partial set-off for the infrastructure contribution. So the question which arose was when the municipality accepted that the developer was going to carry out the works in question, did that give rise to a contract to which the directive applied? That was the issue in the case. And your lordship, if your lordship wants to see the background in terms of the facts in that case, it's set out about the Italian system, it's paragraph sixteen to eighteen of the judgment, but I've explained it broadly, simply. And what happened in this case, it involved the La Scala Opera House in Milan because the developer undertook to carry out some works to produce what was called the Teatro alla Biocca, which was to be a temporary replacement for the La Scala Opera House. So if your lordship goes to forty-nine, where the question is set out. Says the first question should therefore be understood as seeking to ascertain whether the directive precludes national urban development legislation under which the holder of a building permit or of an approved development plan may execute infrastructure works directly by way of total or partial set-off against the contribution payable in respect to the grant of such permission in cases where the value of that work is the same or exceeds the ceiling fixed by the directive. So that, that was the issue which was in question. And the court went on, in order to answer that question, let's underscore, it must be determined whether the direct execution of infrastructure works such as those in issue in the main proceedings constitutes a public works contract within the meaning of Article one A of the directive. Then paragraph fifty-one sets out the definition of a public works contract as comprises the following elements necessarily, a contract for pecuniary interest concluded in writing between a contractor and a contracting authority as defined, which has as its object either the execution of certain works or works defined by the directive. Since the existence of public works contracts is a condition for the application of the directive, Article one A, which is, provides the definition, must be interpreted in such a way as to ensure that the directive is given full effect. It is clear from the preamble to the directive and from the second and tenth recitals in particular that the directive aims to abolish restrictions on the freedom of establishment and on the freedom to provide services in respect of public works contracts in order to open up such contracts to genuine competition. As the tenth recital states, the development of such competition entails publication at community level of contract notices. Furthermore, the definition gives, directive gives definitions contracting authority, works and a work. The definition given by the community legislature confirms that those elements are closely related to the aim of the directive. They must play a decisive role therefore when it falls to be determined whether a public contract works, works contracts exist for the purpose of the directive. This means that in the circumstance involving the execution or the dynamic execution of works or the execution of work for a contracting authority within the meaning of the directive, the assessment of the situation in terms of the other elements referred to in Article one of the directive must be made in such a way as to ensure that the directive is not deprived of practical effect, particularly where that situation displays special characteristics because of the provisions and national law applicable to it. And then your lordship will see they go through each of the elements in turn. So the element relating to contracting authorities dealt with beginning of paragraph fifty-seven. Then if one goes on to the next page, the element relating to the existence of the contract is dealt with at the beginning of paragraph sixty-three. And your lordship will see, according to the Milan City Council, Pirelli, MCS and FTS, this element is lacking because the direct execution of infrastructure works is provided for by a rule contained in the Italian national and regional legislation on urban development, which differs from community public procurement legislation in terms of its subject matter, purpose and characteristics of the interests protected. The both parties contend that the local authority has no power to choose the person to be given responsibility for execution of the works since by operation of law that person is the owner of the land to be developed. And your lordship will see the various other arguments which are set out. So effectively what was being said was the commune has to accept this particular person to do it. Your lordship, I haven't, since I was, I haven't got time to read out all the paragraphs, but if your lordship goes to paragraph, at the end of paragraph seventy-five because they conclude, seventy-four, the terms of development agreement and the agreements concluded are sufficient to provide contractual element. More of seventy-five, this interpretation is consistent with the basic aim of the directive, which is stated above, is to open up public works contracts to competition. Exposure to community competition in accordance with the procedures provided for by the directive ensures that public authorities cannot indulge in favoritism, wherein the fact that public authorities is not free to choose the contractor cannot in itself justify non-application to the directive, since that would ultimately accrue from community competition the execution of works to the directive which the directive will otherwise apply. So that's an illustration of the way in which the court has approached interpreting the term contract by reference to its objective, which is to open up public works or public procurement to competition. There, it wasn't sufficient to negate the existence of a contract, that the contracting authority had no choice over whom it may be that the contract is entered into. And how, the same point is made with even more force, and this is again relevant to the degree of control which needs to be exercised, in the associazione professionale case, volume Your lordship may recall, this is a case I showed your lordship about the purpose of the second condition. And your lordship will call the entity, I'm sorry, the entity in question is Corriereus, which was a wholly state-owned, state-owned entity. It was the universal provider of postal services in Spain and it was concerned a contract between the ministry, which was obviously the state, and Corriereus in respect of the ministry's own postal services. If your lordship would go to page one, two, two, one, six. Paragraph forty-nine, where the court says, assuming this, that threshold is reached, that's the value threshold for the directive. This raises the question whether the cooperation agreement is in fact a contract within the meaning of Article one A of the directive. The Spanish government submits the agreement is not contractual but instrumental, given that Corriereus is unable to refuse to enter into such an agreement, but is under an obligation to accept. In that respect, it must be noted that the definition of public service contracts is a matter of community law with the result of the classification of the cooperation agreement under Spanish law is irrelevant. Admittedly, in paragraph fifty-four of the judgment in Asenfo, the court held the requirement for the application of directives governing the award of public service contracts relating to the existence of contract was not met, where the state company in issue in that case that gave rise to the judgment had no choice as to the acceptance of a demand made by the competent authorities in question or as to the tariff for its services, a matter which was for the referring court to establish. However, that reasoning must be written in its specific context. It follows on from that finding that under the Spanish legislation, that state company is an instrument and technical service to the general state administration and the administration of each of the autonomous communities concerned. The court having already held in a context different from, from that in the case that gave rise to the judgment in Asenfo, that being an instrument and technical service of the Spanish administration, the company in issue was required to implement only work entrusted to it by the general administration of the autonomous communities or the public bodies subject to them. Corriereus, as the provider of the universal postal service, carries out an entirely different task, which means in particular that its customers consist of any person wishing to use the universal postal service. The mere fact the company has no choice as to the acceptance of a demand made by the ministerio or as to the tariff for its services cannot automatically entail that no contract was concluded between the two entities. In fact, such a situation is not necessarily different from that which arises where a private customer wishes to use the services provided by Corriereus, coming within the scope of the universal postal service, since this is in the very nature of the task of providing for that service in such a situation is also required to provide the services requested must do so if necessary for a fixed tariff or in any event for a price that is transparent and non-discriminatory. There is no question that such a relationship must be called contractual. It is only if the agreement between Corriereus and the ministerio were in actual fact a unilateral administrative measure significantly, and as such a measure departing significantly from the normal conditions of a commercial offer made by that company, a matter which it's for the Ordensia Nacional to establish, it would have to be held there is no contract and consequently the directive could not apply. In the course of that examination, the Ordensia will have to consider in particular whether Corriereus is able to negotiate with the ministerio the actual content of the services it has to provide and the tariffs to be applied to those services, and whether as regards non-reserve services, the company can free itself from the obligations arising under the cooperation agreement by giving notices provided for in that agreement. So your lordship will see that even though Corriereus was said to be in the position like Traxa in having to do what it was told, the court insisted that firstly, it would only not be a contract if the terms departed significantly from the normal conditions of a commercial offer, but it also required the national court in paragraph fifty-five to look very carefully at whether Corriereus was able to negotiate the content of what it was to do and also whether it could get out of the obligations effectively by giving notice. In other words, did it have any autonomy in practice about what it was to do? Because even if it would simply serve the notice to bring the agreement to an end, that would give it some autonomy. So your lordships will see that the court is applying a very stringent test in determining whether or not there is a contract, that is to say, an agreement between the two parties. And in my submission, that's entirely understandable. One has to bear in mind, the directive is intended to provide strict rules to open up public procurement to competition. And it's perfectly plain that the Tekel exemption as a derogation falls to be construed and applied strictly. It's one thing to exclude agreements where in substance there's only one person involved and there's no scope for abuse. It's another where in substance there are two people involved. And in that context, it cannot be sufficient that the contracting authority may have some say or influence, but it can't in fact control what the contracting entity may do. The second point under this general heading is that it's wholly irrelevant when considering the application of the directive, that the entity with whom any contract is made may itself be a public authority such as a contracting authority or an association of such authorities. As your lordship saw on Thursday, the award of a public contract to another contracting authority or to an association of contracting authorities falls within the scope of the directive. The only exception under the directive is Article eighteen, where you have special or exclusive rights, which is inapplicable in this case.
Can you give us a paradigm example of where Article eighteen operates?
Well, if you, if you've got special or exclusive, say for example, the entity is the only person who has got by virtue of special or exclusive rights, the only person who can effectively.
Well, that's what it said. Just give us an illustration.
Miss assumptions, there isn't one in England. As far as I know, it's never been relied on in England. Can I, can I think about that over lunch rather than doing it now? But at any rate, what your lordship will see that there's a very narrow exception where you have a contract between public authorities and it can't make a difference that the association of contracting authorities may have a corporate form in that respect. So that's why I say it's completely irrelevant that the contract may be being made with another contracting authority or association of contracting authorities.
Lord, if it helps, we understand that Article eighteen was inserted because there are provisions in the public law of in particular Italy and France under which certain public entities have an exclusive right to supply certain other public entities, and it was to preserve that situation that Article eighteen was included. There's no equivalent in England as far as we're aware.
And one should also bear in mind that Article eighteen only applies to public service contracts, it doesn't apply to supply or works contracts when one looks at it. So it's a fairly narrow exemption. The third point which I'd like to make is there's no rational basis regarding collective control is sufficient. If it was sufficient, it will follow that if the contracting authority had any share in the control of an association or its corporate embodiment, however minor, the contract to it would not be the subject of the directive. So if collective control is sufficient, it doesn't matter how small the share the contracting authority may have, the directive would not apply. But why should that be so? In my submission, it's unintelligible. The association or corporate vehicle may be just as autonomous in its activities as an association or contracting authority in which the contracting authority itself has no share. Mere fact you may get, for example, a share of naught point naught one percent, doesn't make the contracting entity any more or less autonomous it would otherwise be, it's in practice autonomous from you. So just to take an example, assume that you had a regional authority which established a company in which it had ninety-nine percent of the voting rights and it decided to split the other one percent amongst the authorities within its area, whatever number they are. And assume for a moment there were ten, so they each had naught point one percent. Collectively, those authorities may exercise control, but any suggestion that there was no real agreement between two separate persons when one of the local authorities owning naught point one percent of the shares made the contract with the entity would in my submission be risible. So if one is going to look at collective control, the reason for the exemption cannot be that there's no contract between two separate persons, there plainly is in that case. And if you regard collective control as sufficient, it gives rise to an irrational distinction in the context of the directive. It also gives rise to scope for abuse, which one needs to bear in mind. Authorities could in effect arrange to contract out of the public procurement regime, thus closing rather than opening up public procurement to competition. If you had an authority, for example, that wanted to provide goods, works or services, it could set up a company, the hold of whose profits it would enjoy. That company could be awarded contracts by any other contracting authority without any call for competition, provided that the authority whose entity it was gave the contracting authority some share, however minor, in the relevant entity. So effectively, whenever it wanted to get the work without competition, it would simply give a share, however minor, in the entity. Now, that may be a rather modest example. A member state could set up an entity to provide goods, works and services for all the authorities in its state and give them all some share in its control. And that way, it could escape the public procurement regime. The scope for abuse with collective control is in my respectful submission manifest, and it would be incompatible with the aim of opening up. it would be incompatible with the aim of opening up public procurement to the widest possible competition. Such a derogation from the terms of the public sector directive was never contemplated, can also be seen in my submission from the utilities directive. The utilities directive was made on the same day and immediately before the public sector directive, and your lordship will find the utilities directive in volume one of the Your lordship will see, this is directive seventeen rather than eighteen of two thousand and four, and it coordinates the procurement procedures of entities operating in the water, energy, transport and postal services sector, those what are the utilities concerned. Your lordships will see that the general objective is the same as the public procurement directive, but it's intended to afford greater latitude to the utilities and how they go about things. Your lordship will go to paragraph nine of the recitals, dealing with the aim. It says, "In order to guarantee the opening up to competition of public procurement contracts awarded by entities operating in the water, energy, transport and postal services sectors, it's advisable to draw up provisions for community coordination of contracts above a certain value. Such coordination is based on the requirements inferable from articles fourteen twenty-eight and forty-nine of the EC treaty, article ninety-seven of the Euratom treaty, naming the principle of equal treatment, of which the principle of non-discrimination is no more than a specific expression, the principle of mutual recognition, the principle of proportionality, as well as the principle of transparency. In view of the nature of the sectors affected by such coordination, the latter should, whilst safeguarding the application of those principles, establish a framework for sound commercial practice and should allow the maximum flexibility." So although it has the same objective, namely to guarantee the opening up of competition to public procurement contracts, this directive is intended to allow the maximum flexibility within that framework for entities. It's therefore less stringent in its requirements than the public sector directive. Can I just give two very short examples before coming to the relevant provision about why it's less prescriptive? Firstly, when a call for competition is not required, and secondly, the procedures which are followed. If your lordship will go to article forty of this directive. Your lordship will see in article forty-three that, I should say, the relevant bodies who are subject to the directive are called contracting entities rather than contracting authorities. Contracting entities may use a procedure without prior call for competition in certain cases. And if your lordship just goes over the page to look at J and K. J, "For bargain purchases where it's possible to procure supplies by taking advantage of a particularly advantageous opportunity..."
Ross, the plot.
I'm sorry.
You do as to article forty?
Forty, paragraph three.
Yeah.
"Contracting entities may use a procedure without prior call for competition in the following cases..."
Yeah.
And I was going to draw your lordship's attention to J.
Yeah.
"For bargain purchases where it's possible to procure supplies by taking advantage of a particularly advantageous opportunity available for a very short time to price considerably lower, and that are normal prices." And K, "For purchasing supplies under particularly advantageous conditions from either a supplier definitively winding up his business activities, or the receivers or liquidates of bankruptcy, an arrangement of credits or similar procedure on national doors." Now, in the public sector directive, there is an equivalent provision for K, but no equivalent provision for J. So one doesn't need to have a call for competition in the case of J under the utilities directive, but you do under the public sector directive.
Now, the public sector paragraph or article is...
Is article thirty-one, two D is the equivalent of K.
Thank you.
And then in terms of the procedure, if you do have to have a call for competition, if your lordship would just go in this directive to article one-nine, your lordship will see there are basically three types of procedures.
Article one-nine.
They're called the open, restricted and negotiated procedures. In the case of the open procedures, any interested economic operator may submit a tender. In the case of restricted procedures, any economic operator may request to participate, and only candidates invited by the contracting entity may submit a tender. In the case of negotiated procedures, the contracting entity consults the economic operator to its choice and negotiates the terms of the contract, one or more of them. So effectively, the most stringent form procedure is open, restricted is fairly similar, but you can choose who's going to tender, and then negotiated is the most flexible. Now, under this directive, contracting entities have a free choice which of those three procedures to follow. So if you go back to article forty, subsection two, subparagraph two. Contracting entities may choose any of the procedures described in article one-nine, A, B or C, provided that subject to paragraph three a call for competition has been made in accordance with article forty-two. So effectively, under this, sorry, this paragraph two of article forty. So effectively, contracting entities under this directive have a free choice whether to go for the open, restrictive or negotiated procedures. By contrast, under the public sector directive, the circumstances in which they can use the negotiated procedure are strictly limited. If your lordship just goes, it's article twenty-eight of that directive, which is in volume two, if your lordships wish to see it. I don't want to look at the detail, but your lordship will see the basic structure of it. It's tab, sorry, I'm wrong, it's tab two in the same volume, I'm sorry. If your lordship goes to article twenty-eight in the public sector directive. "In awarding their public contracts, contracting authorities shall apply the national procedures adjusted for the purpose of this directive. They shall award these public contracts by applying the open or restricted procedure. In the specific circumstances expressly provided for in article twenty-nine, contracting authorities may award their public contracts by means of competitive dialogue. In the specific cases and circumstances referred to expressly in article thirteen thirty-one, they may apply a negotiated procedure with or without publication of contract notice." So effectively, the procedure they adopt, the circumstances which you use in the negotiated procedure are strictly limited, whereas under the utilities directive, they've got a free choice. Your lordship was, I don't think anything particularly turns on the precise cases, but your lordships will see in article...
So we've just contrasted article twenty-eight of the public service directive, have we, with article forty, sub-two of the utilities?
Utilities directive.
I see.
It's merely to show that under the utilities directive, you have a much more liberal regime in terms of the requirements, it's not so strict as under the public sector directive.
You say that the equivalent of what one finds in the long list in article forty-three, the only one that appears is K, is that right?
Yes, you don't get J.
Do you get the others?
Yes, you get some of the others.
Some of the others, but you don't get J in particular.
No, it was just an example. Effectively, it reflects the position in the recital, which was intended to give greater commercial flexibility in the case of utilities than you would get in the public sector directive. Now, as I mentioned a moment ago, the utilities directive is applicable to what are called contracting entities. Those entities include contracting authorities for the purpose of the public sector directive, when they're carrying out activities which fall within the scope of the utilities directive. When that occurs, it's the utilities directive rather than the public sector directive which applies. So if you go first, just to show that, if you go to article twelve of the utilities directive.
Can you just direct us where in your written argument this is all going to be able to be seen clearly and succinctly?
If your lordship will bear with me.
I mean, I found paragraph eighty, which is...
Is paragraph eighty, yes. What I'm going to come to is the provision which allows a contracting entity to award a contract to a joint venture in certain limited circumstances, and to show that effectively it wouldn't cover this particular type of case, but also, if my lone friend's submissions are right about collective control and about identity of interest, then the utilities directive provision would be Oteos. But as I say, I just need to introduce the matter if I may, my lord.
Just paragraph, it's the only paragraph which you discussed.
My lord, yes, it is, yes.
You were going to, we were going to do another provision, was it article twelve?
My lord, yes, it's just to show how the interrelation between the two directives works. Firstly, it's article twelve of the public sector directive.
Yes.
Sorry, your lordship will find that...
Page one-three-one, is it?
Yeah. Effectively, broadly speaking, the public sector directive doesn't apply to public contracts that fall within the utilities directive by contracting authorities. That's the basic rule normally.
It's the second indent and not...
Yes. So it says the directive should not apply to public contracts which, under directive seventeen, that's the utilities directive, are awarded by contracting authorities exercising one or more of the activities referred to in articles three to seven, those are the, when they're acting as a utility effectively for various types of things, and are awarded for the pursuit of those activities, or to public contracts excluded from the scope of that directive under various articles. However, this directive shall continue to apply to public contracts awarded by contracting authorities carrying out one or more of the activities referred to in article six, and awarded for those activities, since so far as member states are concerned, take advantage of the option referred to in sub-paragraph seventy-one. Well, just to identify the basic rule is probably the simplest thing, is if it's a contract which falls within the utilities directive, it falls outside the public sector directive, that's the basic rule. And your lordship will see in the utilities directive at article two. One begins with paragraph two, it applies to contracting entities which are contracting authorities or public undertakings which pursue one of the activities referred to in articles three to seven. Your lordship see the definition of contracting authorities in article two-one is the same as that as in the public sector directive. So although this goes wider than contracting authorities, contracting authorities when they're pursuing those activities are within this directive. Now, the relevant provision I wanted to take your lordship to is article twenty-three of the utilities directive, which has no equivalent in the public sector. And in particular, paragraph four, but can I show your lordship the structure of article twenty-three?
So we're looking at...
Article twenty-three, my lord, if I may.
And it's at page one-three-three, is it?
One-three-four, I think it is. Well, one-three-four, twenty-two to twenty-three. Your lordship will see article twenty-three deals with contracts awarded to affiliated undertaking, we're in tab three, my lord, in the utilities directive.
Yes, sorry, yes.
Contracts awarded to an affiliated undertaking to a joint venture or to a contracting entity forming part of a joint venture. Paragraph one simply gives a definition of affiliated undertaking, but it includes effectively an undertaking of which the contracting entity may exercise directly or indirectly a dominant influence, that's the basic concept of it. Then paragraph two provides certain conditions in that, the directive doesn't apply to contracts awarded by a contracting entity to an affiliated undertaking, or by a joint venture formed exclusively by a number of contracting entities for the purpose of carrying out activities within the meaning of articles three to seven, to an undertaking which is affiliated with one of these contracting entities. So that's the background. And paragraph four deals with contracts awarded, and I won't concentrate particularly on B, but one needs to look at A, "by a joint venture formed exclusively by a number of contracting entities for the purpose of carrying out activities within the meaning of articles three to seven to one of these contracting entities, or by a contracting entity to such a joint venture of which it forms part, provided that the joint venture has been set up in order to carry out the activity concerned over a period of at least three years, and the instrument setting up the joint venture stimulates the contracting entities which form part of it will be part of it for at least the same period." And then there are various provisions about notification. Now, what is significant here is this is dealing with the award of a contract by a contracting entity to a joint venture of which it is part. So plainly, the joint venture is something over which the contracting entity will have some control. And it's also for the purpose of, the venture is for the purpose of carrying out activities within the meaning of article three to seven, those are the utilities activities. So there's clearly an identification of interest if one's concerned with the identification of interest between the contracting entity and the person with whom the contract is being made. But what is significant in my respectful submission is firstly that the exemption exists, because if my lone friend's argument was correct about collective control and identity of interest, this article would be superfluous and the conditions wouldn't need to be met. But more significantly perhaps, it plainly would not include an entity such as Lamor, which is set up to provide insurance, that would not be a venture set up in order to carry out one of the activities falling with articles three to seven. Those are the water telecommunications and so forth, the type of activities, utilities activities. So in my respectful submission, here one has a specific exemption for contracts awarded by a contracting entity to a joint venture of which that entity forms part. There is no, and there are limitations to that, there is no equivalent provision in the public sector directive. And your lordships will recall, in Carpaterno, I showed your lordship the reference to what was then article thirteen of the utilities directive, and the court said you couldn't read it into the then public service agreement. Article thirteen is in fact now paragraphs two, paragraph two of article twenty-three. Paragraph two was the old article thirteen which has been carried forward. So in my respectful submission, what this illustrates is that contracts generally awarded by bodies to whom the directive is applied to, any joint ventures of which they form part, are not generally exempt from the directives. That looks at the matter in principle. May I now look to the point about general treaty principles and their relevance at the present moment?
Yes. I'm just trying to fit this into the little guy who gave the beginning.
This is my fourth point, the fourth of the general point.
Yes, yes, thank you. So this is treaty...
The fact that general treaty principles may not require a competition doesn't necessarily mean the directive doesn't. Can I say the only case in which collective control has held to be sufficient is Codetel Brabant, which was a case concerned with general treaty principles, not with whether the directive applied. And so the relevant question is different. And lord, before looking at that judgment, what I want to try and show your lordship is that the questions involved in deciding whether the directive or the general, whether the directive applies and what the general treaty principles involve are different. And secondly, there's no reason to assume that the public sector directive does not require more than general treaty principles may do. Now, lord, in the case of the directive, the issue is whether the directive applies, and that turns in part on whether there is a contract. Whether the general treaty principles apply does not depend on the existence of a contract, that is completely different. And unlike the directive, what they may require is not defined by any specific piece of legislation. They are in fact the court's construction of what is envisaged. Now, lord, to make good the first point that they don't depend on the existence of the contract, can I show your lordship firstly a case where they were applied to the grant of licenses by administrative order, which is a case called Engelman, which is volume Mr. Engelman had been convicted of a criminal offence of running a gaming establishment without a licence effectively, and what had happened was that there had been no competition for the limited number of licenses, and that was his complaint. Your lordship will see at paragraph seven of the judgment that effectively the relevant law established a state monopoly over games of chance and effectively reserved the activities of the state unless otherwise stated. And in paragraph twenty-one, "The federal minister for finance was granted the right to organise and operate games of chance by issuing concessions to operate gaming establishments. The number of concessions which may be granted is limited in total to twelve, and only one for each municipal territory." So there's a limited number of opportunities to operate gaming establishments. And your lordship will see from paragraph fourteen that they were initially granted by... granted by administrative order for a maximum period of 15 years. And again, there were some renewals, your Lordship could see in 15 and 16, but again, there hadn't been any public call for tenders. So what was... this was basically a grant of a concession by an administrative order, a licence for a gaming establishment. And your Lordship will see if one goes to the third question, which begins at paragraph 41. The... it begins at 42. The third question should therefore be understood as seeking a ruling as to whether Articles 43 and 49, those are freedom of establishment, freedom of provided services, preclude the grant without any competitive procedure of all the concessions to operate gaming establishments in the territory of a member state for 15 years. And your Lordship goes to paragraph 49. It sets out the general background about the requirement to comply with the obligation of transparency in the case of concessions, if your Lordship sees that. And then 50, without necessarily implying an obligation to call for tenders, that obligation of transparency, which implies that the service concession in question may be of interest in undertaking located in the member state other than that in which the concession is granted, requires the concession granting authority to ensure for the benefit of any potential tenderer a degree of publicity sufficient to enable the service concession to be opened up to competition, and the impartiality of the award procedures to be reviewed. Then says that the grant of a concession in the absence of any transparency to an operator located in a member state of the awarding authority constitutes a difference in treatment to the detriment of operators located in other member states who have no real possibility of manifesting their interest in obtaining such a concession. Such a difference in treatment is contrary to the principles of equal treatment and the prohibition of discrimination constitutes indirect discrimination on the ground of nationality prohibited by 43 and 49, unless this is justified by objective circumstances. The fact that the issue of licenses to operate gaming establishments may not be the same as a service concession contract does not in itself justify any failure to have regard to the requirements arising from Article 49. Indeed, the obligation of transparency amounts to a condition which must be met before a member state can exercise its right to award licenses to operate gaming establishments. So, Lordship, it's just a simple case. This was a license to operate gaming establishments. It didn't involve a contract. What was being done was to effectively control opportunities to provide certain services, and therefore general treaty principles would require competition unless there were objective circumstances which justified derogating from them. And one has, of course, to bear in mind that the application of treaty principles, and in particular the principle of transparency in this context, which deals with the call for competition, therefore do not depend on whether there's a contract in existence. And therefore, the purpose of the first line in TECAL can't be the same. But also, unlike the Directive, general treaty principles are feasible by objective considerations which may point the other way. As one can see, there may be justification, classically, for example, public safety and so forth. So they can be done. Lord, the point was made expressly by the court in parking Brixton as well, in volume 5, at tab 40. It's the same...
Couldn't be 40. Is it 640?
If your Lordship goes to paragraph 57 of the judgment. It refers to TECAL in 57, as your Lordship will recall. And 58 sets about... relates... says this regards to existence of the contract that sets out the test. 59 says the same considerations apply to the other direction. 60, those considerations are based on the premise that the application of the directives depends on the existence of a contract concluded between two distinct persons. Yet the application of Articles 12, 43 and 49, as well as the principle of equal treatment, non-discrimination, transparency associated with them, does not depend on the existence of a contract. As a result, the considerations developed in the case law, cited in paragraphs 56 to 59 of this judgment, do not apply automatically either to those provisions of the treaty or to those principles. Now, Lord, it's perfectly obvious, if you're going to look at a concession, why, if you fall within the TECAL conditions, general treaty principles won't require competition. The reason is perfectly obvious for this reason. The Directive sets out specific strict requirements. If the Directive doesn't require you to do them, then there can be no reason why the general treaty principle should. But non constat that if the general treaty principles don't require you, the Directive may require you to do it. They're different points. And, Lord, there is an example of that, if I may show you, Lordship, in a case called Akaset, which is in volume Can I just explain the background to Akaset? This involved the grant of a concession without competition to a company whose shares were owned both by the contracting authority and a private entity. So on the face of it, if this had been a Directive case, it would have fallen foul of the Stat Hall principle, and also the Commission Italy case, the Augusta Helicopter case.
So this is a treaty case?
This is a treaty case. It was found to be... what had happened was there'd been a prior competition for the share... to acquire the shares in the company. And it was held that that was sufficient for general treaty principles. One didn't need a competition for the contract. Can I just show you, Lordship, that? If you go to paragraph 42, the court is proceeding on the assumption that what is in issue is a concession. So your Lordship will see we're dealing with a concession. 46, notwithstanding the fact that public service concession contracts are excluded from the scope of the directives, public authorities concluded nonetheless bound to comply with the fundamental rules of the EC Treaty. So that's what they're going to consider. Your Lordship will see in 49 that one needs a degree of advertising sufficient to open up to competition. And your Lordship will see the application of those rules is set out if the control exercised over the concessionaire by the concession grant in public authorities comparable, which happens to the authority exercised over in its departments, and if at the same time the entity carries out its essential part of the activities. It says the case law is relevant for the interpretation of the directives as well as Article 49. And then if your Lordship goes on, where a private undertaking has a holding, even a minority holding in the capital of a company in which the contracting authority in question also has a holding, it's impossible for the contracting authority to exercise over that company control comparable to which it exercises over its own departments. That is the case with the concessions issued in the main proceeding, since the private participant was required to subscribe 49% of the share capital in the semi-public company which was to award the concession in question. In those circumstances, necessary to discern more specifically whether the award of a public service in question to a semi-public company without any specific invitation to competitive tendering is compatible with community law, inasmuch as the tendering procedure for the selection of the private participant responsible for the integrated management of the water service has been conducted in a manner compatible with Articles 43 and 49 and the principles of equal treatment and non-discrimination on the ground of nationality as well as the concomitant obligation of transparency. It is apparent from the case law that the award of a public contract to a semi-public company without a call for tenders would interfere with the objective of free and undistorted competition and the principle of equal treatment, in that such a procedure would offer a private undertaking with capital holding in that company an advantage over its competitors. Furthermore, as stated in paragraph 2.1 of the Commission Interpretive Communication, the fact that a private entity and a contracting entity cooperate with a semi-private entity cannot serve as a justification for the contracting entity not having to comply with the legal provisions on concessions when assigning concessions to that private entity or respective semi-private entity. However, as the Advocate General states in point 85 of his opinion, it's difficult to reconcile the use of a double competitive tendering procedure with the aim of reducing procedural formalities that underlies institutionalised public-private partnerships, such as that is an issue in the main proceedings, whose establishment involves the use of the same procedure both to select the economic participant and to award concessions to the public-private entity to perform for sole purpose. While the absence of a competitive tendering procedure in connection with the award of services would appear to be irreconcilable with Articles 43 and 49 and with the principles of equal treatment and non-discrimination, that situation may be rectified by selecting the private participant in accordance with the requirements set out in paragraphs 46 to 49 above, and choosing appropriate criteria for the selection of the private participant, since the tenders must provide evidence not only of their capacity to become a shareholder, but primarily of their technical capacity to provide the services in economic and other advantages which a tender brings. Insofar as the criteria for the selection of a private participant are based not only on the capital contribution, but also the participant's technical capacity and the characteristics of its tender with regard to particular services to be provided. And as in the case in the main proceedings, the participant is entrusted with the operation of the service in question, and thus with the management of the service, the selection of the concessionaire can be regarded as an indirect result of the selection of that participant, which is what was made at the conclusion of the procedure, conducted in accordance with the principles of community law. So the second competitive tendering procedure for the selection of the concessionaire is unnecessary. So, Lordship, we'll see... sorry, I put that rather quickly, but, Lordship, we'll see that effectively, if the competition for the shareholding complies with certain requirements, that may be sufficient to justify not having a competition for the award of the concession to the company in which the shares have been sold. Now, that simply could not work as far as the Directive is concerned. The sale of the shares would not be a public contract falling within the Directive. It's not a contract for the provision of goods, works or services. What would fall within the Directive would be the contract, the entity for the operation of whatever the centre is, if it's a centre which is to be operated. So it would be the contract whereby the entity provides the services in question. So the Directive would be directly applicable to it. And as your Lordship knows from the Stat Hall and the Commission Italy case, the Directive continues to be applied if the private sector... the entity with whom the contract is made has any private sector shareholding at all. That's the Stat Hall case and the Augusta Helicopter infringement proceeding case. And, Lord, another case, if I can just ask you, because of the time I can just give you, Lordship, a reference to it. The Directive continues to apply even if the conditions for the TECAL exemption apply at the date of the award of the contract, if you know that the shareholding is to be sold to a private sector entity. That's a case called the Commission in Austria, which is volume 4, at tab 28. So, Lord, in my respectful submission, there's no reason to assume that there are not stricter requirements in the case of a Directive. Indeed, if there weren't stricter requirements, there'd be no point in having a Directive. Moreover, as I've mentioned, the Directive... directives themselves, the Utilities Directive and the Public Sector Directive, vary in the strictness of their own requirements, even though one was within a specific legislative regime. So the fact that general treaty principles may or may not require competition if there's collective control, in my submission, does not answer the question whether or not the Directive does. Lord, can I now turn to my fifth point and look at Cote d'Albret Brevand?
Yes.
As your Lordship will recall, it's volume 4, at tab 27. This was a concession case. It wasn't a case where the Directive was... And could I just, by way of background, also point out one other thing which is rather puzzling about Cote d'Albret Brevand? And that is that the second condition for the application of TECAL was not referred to the court for judgment. Your Lordship goes to paragraph 18 in the judgment, which is at page 8495.
Sorry, page again?
8495, paragraph 18 of the judgment.
Yes.
The order for... under the order for reference, Brutalay carried out the essential part of its activities with its members. There was no question raised in Cote d'Albret Brevand about the second condition. I say that's rather odd, because, of course, what Brutalay was actually doing in this contract was putting on the... trying to get in the market cable television, internet and broadband services. So it was in the market, trying to get cable TV, broadband and internet services from the public. So it's rather strange that that issue wasn't referred, but that there it is.
It was simply control, then.
It was simply the control part. And again, it was the general treaty principles.
Yeah.
Now, Lord, I'd like to make three general points and then take your Lordship to the crucial part of the decision and make them good. Firstly, neither the Advocate nor the Court refer anywhere to the content of the Public Sector Directive. Or to the function which the control test has in that context, namely to establish whether there is a contract. They therefore did not consider whether collective control would enable the control test to perform the function for which it was designed. Secondly...
Just wait a moment.
Yep.
Control test was able to perform the function...
Function for which it was designed. Secondly, neither the Advocate General nor the Court referred to the fact that contracts between a contracting authority and another contracting authority, or an association of contracting authorities, are within the scope of the Directive. That is to say that cooperation affected by contract between such bodies is not exempt from the Directive. Thirdly, and it's a specific illustration of that, neither the Advocate General nor the Court referred to the fact that contracts between a contracting authority and a central purchasing body for contracting authorities...
Between a contracting authority and who?
And a central purchasing body for such authorities are within the scope of the Directive. And that is a prime illustration of cooperative arrangements. Lord, to make good those submissions and to illustrate the significance of the emissions...
Just before you do that, is there a particular paragraph in your case where you have all this...
Yes, my lord.
It's a good help just to get a note.
Yep. Just bear with me. Your Lordship will find this at paragraph 99. And what I want to do...
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry. What I want to do, if I may, is look at the crucial part of the reasoning in Cote d'Albret Brevand, which is the answer to question 3, which deals with individual collective control. And to see how such reasoning as there is would apply if you tried to apply it to the Directive, because your Lordship will see that nowhere in this paragraph, this part of the judgment, is the Directive being referred to.
I mean, is your point that on the face of it, this authority is against you, but that it was wrong?
Well, on the face of it, your Lordship says it against me, because it says that collective control is sufficient. It's dealing with general treaty principles, not the Directive. So whether or not it's right about general treaty principles is not, in my respectful submission, decisive for this case. The question is whether or not it determines for the purpose of the Directive whether collective control is sufficient.
Well, we'll look at it in a moment, but doesn't it actually say that the TECAL exemption jurisprudence does apply?
Well, Lord, it says that it applies by analogy. That's true. But I'll show you, Lordship, what it says about it in detail, because one needs to look at it.
Well, sorry, I shouldn't have interrupted you.
But, Lord, if... I would have necessarily submit it was wrongly decided, but that's... I don't need to do that. It may be... I want to come back to the point. The point I was making a moment ago, which your Lordship would have seen from one of the cases, that general treaty principles are defeasible if you think there's sufficient public interest which counteracts it. That is not the case with the Directive, because if the Directive applies, what is required is set out. So they're different in nature in that respect from it, apart from a separate question. Lord, question 3 begins at page 8503. And the first point which the court is dealing with is between paragraphs 44 and 46. And essentially, this is an attempt to infer from the fact that the second condition in TECAL refers to more than one authority, that the first condition should. Can I just remind you, Lordship, what it says? Should be pointed out, according to the case law of the court, where several public authorities control a concessionaire, the condition relating to the essential part of that entity's activities may be met if the count is taken of the activities which that entity carries out with all those authorities. That's the second condition in TECAL. It would be consistent with the reasoning underlying that case law to consider that the conditionists, the control exercised by public authorities, may also be satisfied if the count is taken of the control exercised jointly over the concessionaire by the controlling public authorities. So your Lordship will see that what is sought to be inferred is that because the second condition applies, can be satisfied... applies, can be satisfied by the activities with controlling authorities plural, that can be applied to the first condition. That's the essential part of that reasoning. And now, lord, in my respectful submission, what that overlooks is why there are two conditions and indeed the respective purpose of each.
Is this really, we're looking at the last sentence of forty-six?
Yes. Well, I'll come to that in a subsequent point. At the moment, what is in forty-five is effectively saying that because the second condition applies to more than one authority, the first condition should as well. Now, lord, in my respectful submission, what's been lost sight of, and it may well be precisely because this was a concession case rather than a directive case, is that the purpose of the two conditions are different. The purpose of the second condition, as your lordship has seen from Association Professionale, which is not a case referred to, I think, is that it's to make sure that the entity is not in competition with others. The purpose of the first condition, the control test, is to see whether there are in substance two people involved. And that's completely different. So, in my respectful submission, what is being overlooked is the reason for the first control condition in the TECL case in the context of the directive. Lord, I said I'll come to paragraph forty-six. Your lordship will see that what is said is that the control exercised over the concessionaire must be effective, but it's not essential that it must be exercised individually. My respectful submission, that actually just involves a plain non sequitur. The fact that you may have, a number of authorities may collectively control the concessionaire doesn't mean that the contracting authority's control is effective. It may have no effective control at all. So it does in fact involve a non sequitur in that particular paragraph. Now, can I then turn to the second part of the reasoning, which begins at paragraph forty-seven? And your lordship will see effectively, this is paragraph forty-seven to fifty, and then there are various comments made about the case law, which I'll come to in a moment. And your lordship may just wish to skim back over them to see what the points being made are. Now, lord, in my submission, there are two separate questions which are being conflated in these paragraphs. The first is becoming a member of an association of contracting authorities. And the second is awarding that association a public contract. That's to say a contract for the supply of goods, works or services. So there are two separate questions, becoming a member of an association of authorities and, secondly, awarding the association a contract. Now, the directive does not apply to the acquisition of membership of an association of contracting authorities, but it does apply to awarding that association a contract which has as its object the supply of goods, works or services. Now, article eighteen makes it plain that as a general rule, as do the provisions on common purchasing authorities, that they apply, the directive applies to contracts for goods, works and services with an association of contracting authorities. It's perfectly plain. And those provisions are not even referred to at all in this part of the judgment. So how would the reasoning in this part of the judgment actually work if it was to be applied to those provisions? Can I take firstly a contract with an association of contracting authorities? Because that's broadly within the scope subject to article eighteen. Effectively, the court's reasoning must be that the directive does not apply if the association is one in which the contracting authority is a member, but it does apply if the contracting authority is not a member. But why does that make any sense in the context of the directive and the desire to open up public procurement to competition? My respectful submission is just an unintelligible distinction, and it's not one which the court addresses. The result in the case of common purchasing authorities would be even more bizarre. Your lordship will recall, with the provisions about common purchasing authorities, if you have one, if the common purchasing authority complies with the directive, as a contracting authority, you're not liable. If it doesn't comply with the directive, as a contracting authority, you are liable. That's the basic scheme of the directive. So if the court is right, if you have no say over the common, you're not a member of the common purchasing authority, you've got no say over it, then you're within the scope of the directive and you may be liable if the common purchasing authority doesn't comply. On the other hand, if you do have a share, or say, in the control over the common purchasing authority, the directive does not apply. And if the common purchasing authority fails to comply with the directive, then you have no liability. So in other words, the less say you have, the more liable you will be for the common purchasing authority, towards. The more say you have, the less responsibility you have. In my respectful submission, that's just perverse. So, lord, if one looks at the reasoning in this part of the judgment, it simply hasn't addressed the provisions of the directive and whether the reasoning makes any sense in that context, and in my respectful submission, it doesn't. Lord, if your lordship then looks at what is said about the case law, it refers to co-name in paragraph fifty-two. But then what is quite extraordinary is what is actually said in paragraph fifty-three about a SEMPFO. Because it said in a later judgment, namely a SEMPFO, fifty-six to sixty-one, the court recognized that, and I emphasize the words, in certain circumstances, the condition relating to control exercised by a public authority could be satisfied where such an authority held only naught point two-five percent of the capital in the public undertaking. Well, the crucial point is what the circumstances were. The circumstances in a SEMPFO were in fact that the autonomous community could direct tracks on what to do and on what terms. So it is scarcely a case, if I may respectfully say so, which establishes that a naught point two-five percent share in the capital should satisfy the control condition. So, my lord, when one looks at Cote d'Albret Bant, I concentrate, I have said on the court's judgment because of time, but your lordship will find the advocate general doesn't look at the directive as well. So if one looks at Cote d'Albret, it simply does not grapple with the provisions of the directive and its scope. And lord, nowhere does it refer to the fact that the objective of the directive is in fact to open up public procurement to the widest possible competition.
But do you accept, I'm not sure whether you do accept, that although, of course, treaty is not the same as directive, nevertheless, that in this case the court was applying by analogy, but was applying the jurisprudence on the directive to the treaty?
Well, it was applying by analogy the jurisprudence, but it doesn't follow that the content of the requirements is the same in each case. As your lordship will appreciate for a moment, it's perfectly possible for the court, your lordship recalls for a moment, that general treaty principles are effectively the invention of the Court of Justice effectively for this purpose from the treaty. And they have found that the general treaty principles are defeasible if there are objective circumstances which in court's view justify that. The directive is not that sort of legal construct. It is a legislative provision which requires certain things to be done if the legislation applies. So the question for the court in a directive case is not, is competition a good thing or a bad thing, or should it take place in this particular case? The question for the court in a directive case is, does the directive apply? And in effect, that is whether or not there's a contract. And if one, for present purposes, if one looks at the answer to question three, nowhere does the court in Cote d'Albret Bant refer to the fact that the question is whether or not there's a contract, which is the crucial question for the purpose of the directive.
Now, it's after one o'clock. I don't know what, have you finished with Cote d'Albret?
I have indeed, my lord.
Yes. Well, how are we doing with time? Because in his initial bid, Mr. Sumption, I think, was asking for half an hour for reply. Is that still your position, Mr. Sumption?
I've discussed this with my learned friend.
Yes.
I will need more than half an hour because I deliberately shortened my opening submissions by not dealing with some of the other cases that my learned friend referred to. I suggested to my learned friend, I would reduce the figure that I suggested to my learned friend. I think that I can reply in an hour. But I will be very hard put to it to reply in less than that.
I'll obviously do best to comment myself. I should perhaps say that my learned friend took longer than his original estimate for his opening. And so actually, I'm doing less, I think, than the time I estimated, but I'll try and do as much time as I can.
Well, it would be helpful if you would. Thank you very much. Two o'clock then.